Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be here this evening. We're so grateful for the moisture and the rain that we're receiving at this time. We're thankful for this fun time of year and the hope that we have to enjoy the nice weather. We're grateful that we can live in Washington City. We are grateful for all those who work diligently and serve to make it a great place to live. We pray at this time that that would help us as we go throughout our agenda and the items on there that we can do so in a calm and orderly fashion. And we thank thee and pray for and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I rise. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item one on our agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. I'll look for a motion.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we approve tonight's agenda for November 19th.
Commissioner Davis seconds that motion.
I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item two, approval of the minutes from the November 5th, 2025 meeting.
Ms. Commissioner Tupow, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Usually we have a... We have this mixed up annual business. It's about my decorations and abstentions. Does anyone have any abstentions or conflicts about tonight's agenda? Okay. Do you have the planning commission schedule that we want to approve? I didn't see that in the... Oh. It's in the packet, sorry. So, the 2026, item three, is the... The dates that we need to approve for our planning commission? If we've had a chance to look at those and make sure that they're... Okay, we'll look for a motion on that as well.
Commissioner Davis makes a motion to adopt the proposed 2026 planning commission schedule?
Commissioner Tupow, I second that.
I have a first by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Tupow. All in favor?
Aye.
Just for the public, same pace that you've kept this year, two meetings per month. Item 5A, Z-25-22, request to update the PUDC site plan located at 323 East Telegraph Street. We'll turn this over to Eldon.
Thank you, Commissioners. The property at this location is zoned PUDC and approximately .74 acres in size. Established business, everyone's aware of it, it's on the corner there. The applicant is proposing a revised site plan that includes the following changes: Replacing the above-ground stormwater pond with underground chambers to allow additional parking. That's adjacent to Telegraph. Relocate the trash enclosure approximately 20 feet northeast and add a right out onto Telegraph Street. Staff recognizes access to the site is challenging at this location. Staff does support the proposed changes as they meet the guidelines for the PUDC zone. Staff recommends planning commission, recommend approval of Z-25-22, and this is on to city council with the findings and conditions stated in staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Do you guys have any questions or... I'll open this up for public comment. This is the public hearing. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to item 5A?
Commissioners, good to be with you tonight. I rise today to speak in favor of this. This is a business that has done a good job with what they've had. But they've had challenges with their, with the driving structure there. Just encourage your consideration on this. This is a business we need there. They need to continue to have every opportunity to succeed, and I think they can with a better traffic pattern. That's all I have to say. Thank you. It's Kurt Ivy. Did you say? I have to, Kurt Ivy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ivy. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this? All right, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. And if you guys don't have any questions for Eldon? I'll look for a motion.
That thing is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it looks straightforward to me. The only question I have is why didn't we let them have a right in, right out the first time? John, can you answer that?
I can, I can handle that one. Originally, when Flavors went in, we didn't have a traffic median out on Telegraph. And without that median there, our truck access management didn't allow for a right in, right out at that location.
Okay.
But now that we've installed that median, now we can work with the right in, right out there, so.
Okay, awesome. You guys have any other questions or we'll look for a motion on this then?
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I'll make a motion that we approve or recommend approval and send it to the city council for Z-25-22. The request to update the PUDC site plan located at 323 East Telegraph. As outlined by staff with their findings and conditions.
Commissioner Tupow, I second that.
I have a first by Commissioner Mitchell, a second by Commissioner Tupow, individual voting. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Tupow?
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well.
This will go on to city council with the recommendation of approval. Item 5B is C-25-14, request for conditional use permit for a five-story hotel located on the southeast corner of Buena Vista Boulevard in Washington Parkway. Eldon, I'll turn the time over to you.
The proposed hotel previously received a height waiver up to 65 feet by the council on July 23rd, 2025, and the proposed building elevations show the building being 65 feet tall. The property is zoned C3, which requires hotels to obtain an approved conditional use permit. I'll pull up the site plan here. The entire parcel is approximately 15.5 acres with the hotel encompassing 3.3. This hotel is the first commercial building on this site, and there will be more commercial to follow with access being provided with this first phase. The hotel includes 143 rooms with a proposed 176 parking spaces. This satisfies parking requirements. The exterior building elevations incorporate a variety of material and include stone, bricks, stucco, metal paneling, and fiber cement. The proposal also includes a landscape plan which is aesthetically pleasing. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of C-25-14, and this also goes on to city council based on the findings and conditions stated in staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
This is Commissioner, I have a few questions. I guess first is parking. I know that there's some surplus parking has been added. My understanding is that hotels like this require quite a bit more parking than normal because of the extended stay. How confident are you that that is the right amount of parking that we've got slotted there?
Yeah, great questions. I compared it to our city ordinance and they meet those requirements. I'm confident that we'll have parking service to residents adequately.
And also, this is my second meeting, so I'm still kind of learning the ropes. So, just forgive me, I might ask a dumb question, but I wanted to ask a question about the aesthetic of this building. It's the first building you see when we get off that freeway exit. And it feels, you know, and also it's going to be anchoring this whole commercial area. And so, I'm curious whether that is, you know, whether we as a board have any, you know, discretion about over the aesthetic of a building like this that's going to be such a visual, you know, spot coming right when you're coming into our city? You know, there's not much breaking up the general facade on the building. So, I'm not even sure if that's an appropriate line of questioning, but I'm curious about that. So, it might be a question to our commissioners, do we have any, you know, sway when it comes to the aesthetic of these big buildings that are going to be an anchor for our community?
So, I'll respond with just the attorney answer. The planning commission's role is to review compliance with code and standards and policies adopted by the city. Washington City Council has not adopted any code or standards for things like look or colors or styles. It might be a recommendation from the commission that you ask them to do so, but as of today, there isn't a standard.
Architectural.
Correct. There is no architectural standard or styling standard yet that has been adopted. And so, it's difficult for the planning commission to review on that nature without a standard. In the case of this one, I think your commentary will go to them. They're going to have to see this one and decide on it as well. So, I think you can give that feedback, but there isn't really a standard for you to uphold or, you know, find was not met because there isn't a standard on that yet.
Okay, thank you. And my understanding is that the detention basin is just for the 3.3 acre parcel, not for that full 15 acre parcel? Right, thanks.
Also, just to comment on the design, most franchised hotels have their own design. So, they try to keep it pretty uniform amongst Hilton brands in Hampton. This is obviously Hilton brand, so.
Eldon, this is Commissioner Davis. Just a quick question with respect to the site. Do they plan, is the plan to kind of fill it in a bit because it's, you know, it's in a bit of a gully? I'm assuming that the intention is to bring it up to closer to street level? And then, kind of everything would take off from there?
This hotel site will be padded out flat to accommodate that, or not flat, but reduce those undulations, you know, to accommodate the use.
So, it's going to sit up as you get off? I mean, just, I can't believe Hilton wouldn't want that.
Yeah, in relation to the road, I'm not sure as to the height that it will sit. You know, if the applicant's here, the engineer, they may be able to pass that.
Bob Hermanson, representing the project this evening. So, yeah, so you're referring to the large drainage channel that's there? Yeah, for sure. That'll be leveled off, and there'll be a new storm drain pipe that accommodates that, that wraps around the site. And so, all of that will be generally at the similar grade as the ramp, just to, that it's adjacent to. Yep?
Makes sense.
Yeah. Any other questions while I'm here? And the other question's about the aesthetics of it. So, this is a prototype directly from Hilton. So, this is their template. You were hitting it spot on. They provide that, and then you basically fill in the gaps with the architecture and the internal side of it. But yeah, this is a direct prototype directly from Hilton. It had to go through its own review process for materials and everything else that we updated a little bit, but it's basically identical to what their template is.
But if our city did have an architectural code that it needed to meet, then they would need to update that, right? We just don't have that.
Yeah, you would have to update to whatever conformance that is. Typically, it ends up being a bit of a negotiation because these larger brands don't bend real easy.
Yeah.
However, you see them around like in really prominent places in Jackson or something where the exteriors are different, right? Like they're different Sedona or something like that. This specific area does not have that.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, I'll open this up for a public hearing. If anyone is here that would like to speak to this? Item, please come up and do so. Okay, I'll close the public hearing portion of this. Does anyone else have any questions on this? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Commissioner Davis, I'll make a motion for approval and forwarding to city council of item C-25-14, the request for conditional use permit for a five-story hotel located at the southeast corner of Buena Vista Boulevard in Washington Parkway, subject to the conditions and findings in staff report.
Commissioner Anderson, I second.
I'm first by Commissioner Davis and second by Commissioner Anderson, individual voting. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Tupow?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. We'll just send this on to city council with the recommendation for approval. Thank you. Item 5C is another conditional use permit. C-25-13, a request for conditional use permit for the Department of Alcohol Beverage Services located at 350 West Buena Vista Boulevard. Eldon, we'll turn this over to you.
This location is also known as Lot 7 of the Buena Vista Commercial Plaza, so, going here. The property is zoned C3, and under Washington City ordinance 910B-2B, the use regulations require state-approved and operated liquor stores to obtain conditional use permit approval. This building, I'll pull up their elevations, is approximately 12,500 square feet in size and includes retail, storage, and administration areas. Each DAB's building is designed with a modern feel that incorporates colors that blend in with the surrounding area and draw inspiration from the region's landscape. The applicant has noted that in order for the state to hire a firm to produce architectural drawings, the state must first obtain conditional use permit. The state of Utah procurement and contracting laws prevent DABS from entering into a contract with a firm to produce those detailed site-specific plans. So, in essence, the state cannot close on the lot until a CUP is secured, but yet our conditional use permit, you know, the ordinance requires that conditional use permit here. Staff has reviewed the proposal and recommends the planning commission recommend approval of C-25-13 on to city council based on the findings and conditions stated in staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So, if this is approved, we'll see it again, Eldon, for the actual rendering of the building? Correct?
The applicant is proposing that they would work with city officials to see the second half through the process.
So, there's state law that says that the state and school districts and state-related entities don't have to come for local consent. The city acknowledges that, but also asks them to come for some level of contribution. We're administering this hearing tonight as, especially with them showing us their prototype of what they've been building, as the only required approval. Includes a concession towards the state law that says you don't have to go ask them for anything. They would like to work with Washington City. They would rather not just say, hey, here's our fist and take it because we're going to move on and do away with our land. So, they want to have some degree of local consent. They also don't want to have to come back multiple times. And so, we're treating tonight as their hearing, and then their next hearing in the city council will be their hearing and essentially finding that middle ground between the state law and their desire to work with us and our desire to be worked with a little bit.
That maybe can help me. I know when we were looking at a bar coming into the community, there were certain requirements or residents or whatever. Obviously, this is different, so I'm just looking maybe for an educational opportunity here. Those stores that sell the product obviously have a different, different.
Correct. So, the way that alcohol establishments are regulated, there's a divide between whether consumption happens onsite or offsite. So, right now in our city, there's a lot of businesses that sell it, so it's packaged for offsite grocery stores, convenience stores, gas stations. They sell a lot of alcohol products, but the consumption is not supposed to happen there. It's supposed to go home and be consumed. When it gets consumed onsite, Washington City Code contains regulation, and so does state law. Onsite consumption needs a special license in addition to just retail sales. In City Code, there is a designation in the current zoning that allows a state retail sale location within this zone. And so, that's probably before my time when they wrote that language, but that's been in that zone as an allowed use for years and years. And so, this is the first time the state's come and said, hey, we'd like to bring one of these to the right zone in your city. But this would be regulated a lot like the other offsite consumption areas where it's a commercial use, but we don't, our code does not treat it differently like they would onsite consumption where our code essentially acknowledges there's the risks of some of the things that come along with alcohol consumption at that site. And so, it's treated like those other ones where if you are allowed within the, if your land's in the zone that allows it, bring us your application and let us process it.
Thank you.
I was just gonna make a comment that I appreciate them respecting the city to actually work with us.
And, you know, to their credit, our school district is also similar. The school district will come and say, hey, we've got a law, but we want to let you guys know what we're building and where and how it's going to look and where we're going to have our driveways. And I know our public works appreciates knowing those things, and so do our other boards and representatives. And so, I feel like it's a good middle ground. They're giving us enough to feel like we have still some administrative involvement with what's going on in our city. We're also acknowledging that there is supremacy in the law. And we are a political subdivision of the state of Utah. And so, if they wanted to come and just shove something in where, without our consent, we probably wouldn't win that lawsuit.
All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come speak to it, we did have two online submitted to us that will be, I'm sure we've all read, and those will be forwarded on to city council as well. They're in the record.
I did want to maybe comment on the one about proximity to parks. That is still a requirement that would apply to a location like this, and the proximity does meet our standard. And so, it is, this isn't a request to become closer to a park than the standard would allow it. This one does meet that measurement.
It's far enough away that it's okay?
Correct.
So, if anyone here would like to speak to this, please do so at this point. Item 5C. Okay, we will close item 5C's public hearing portion, and if you guys have any other questions?
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion. Give you a little bit of, sorry to interrupt your motion. Plan to be located on the back row of that development, so it wouldn't have street front visibility. It might be visible, say, from the interstate. But they've been, I feel cognizant of also locating at that location instead of being on the street front, being back in the back half of the project. And they've, their representatives have been very responsive with our representatives. It's been, it's been a long process as they've looked throughout our city trying to find a site that works for them, and they feel like they finally found one.
Commissioner Anderson, I move to recommend approval of C-25-13, request for conditional use permit for the Department of Alcohol Beverage Services located at 350 West Buena Vista Boulevard. Commissioner Davis seconds that motion?
I have a first by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Davis, individual voting. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Tupow?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. Item 6 is adjournment. I'll look for a motion to adjourn the planning commission meeting.
Commissioner Tupow, I make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
I have a first and a second to adjourn meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We will start the land use in about five minutes. Meeting is adjourned. We will start the land use in about five minutes. Let's start this meeting. Welcome to the Land Use Authority meeting for November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Item one on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I approve the agenda for tonight's meeting, November nineteenth.
Commissioner Davis seconds.
I have a first by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from the November fifth. It says nineteenth, but it should be the November fifth meeting.
Commissioner Tupoe, I make a motion to approve the minutes from November fifth, twenty twenty-five.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, a second.
I have a first by Commissioner Tupoe, second by Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
Item three is the land use authority minutes, or dates for twenty twenty-six. It'll be the same every other, the first and third Wednesdays after Planning Commission. So I'll look for a motion.
Davis makes a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-six land use authority meeting schedule.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, July second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item four, declarations of abstentions and conflicts. Does anyone have any with tonight's? Okay. Item five is a preliminary plat approval for Al- Almet- Al- Altamera. At Solente Village Two Phase One Subdivision located approximately west Solente Parkway. I'm having a hard time tonight. I'll turn this over to Eldon. I know, this is, oh, sorry. Sebastian.
All right. Good evening and thank you. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the Altimera at Solente Village Two Phase One Subdivision located at approximately Solente Parkway and Kalima Road. This particular subdivision is proposing fifty-three lots on approximately fifteen acres of land. The residential lots will consist of forty-three, yeah, forty-three single-family units with lots ranging in size from forty-five hundred square feet to sixty-four hundred square feet. Ten townhome units on the northern edge of the project and also one lot which is number one oh one on the preplat. That's the existing sales center, which I believe will be converted to a house if I'm not mistaken. No, not. It'll just remain a sales center. Ah, okay. Thank you for the correction. Yes. I may add also that the density is three point five three units an acre. The current zoning designation at this location is PCD with PCD to the north, south, east, and west. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning and the request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends the land use authority approve the preliminary plat for the Altimera at Solente Village Two Phase One Subdivision based on the findings in this report. That concludes that report and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commissioner Davis, just a question, and this is probably just from my background since I haven't been here all that long either, is that with this PCD when it was approved, I don't know when, I'm not sure when it was, when this thing came into existence, but I did notice that there aren't any interim requirements for the completion of amenities in the write-up. I'm assuming that's because it's part of the broader project. Just want to validate that.
Yeah, Craig Coats with Alliance Consulting. Yeah, so there's no like specific, there are some amenities. Like in the first phase, they're working on the current clubhouse for that phase that was already built to the east. This one, they're going to do a pool. You can see the amenity parcel up there. And then as you, and you haven't seen it yet, but as you go west, there'll be some parks and there's another two pools that are planned for those communities as you go across. And a future park on the very northwest corner of Village Two is kind of the proposed plan for the master, and they're in the master plan.
They're in the ma- okay.
Yeah. So not all these pools are in the master plan, but like the main parks in the master plan and some of those are part of the master plan.
So there, again, there aren't any interim hooks here as far as what we're looking at.
They put them in as the development comes just little by little and then, I mean, they want them for their residence. As soon as they know they have to sell these lots, they have to have an amenity to move forward with them. So makes sense.
While you're here, is this, I know, I'm not sure, I haven't been over there, but wasn't there like trailheads that were supposed to be? Are they still in or they're putting them in on the, it'll be on the north?
Yeah, so that
Northwest side?
There's three trailheads in the whole master development. They're all on the, the Grapevine Trailhead was built already. The Dyno Cliffs Trailheads up into the east, northeast of Solente. The slot will come at a later date. And then there's the Mill Creek Trailhead, which is clear to the northwest. So, and there's still the access. As you can see, the, on the left there, there's an existing roadway that's there that's staying in place for this first phase. Currently, the well water line is in that road right now. The next phase will relocate that well water line to Solente Parkway on the east and north. And then the Solente Parkway will connect over to that roadway. So the existing dirt roads are staying in place with this phase.
But those trailheads will be improved like the Grapevine Trailhead will be?
Yes.
Basically. I mean, that's another amenity that they've done and done above and beyond to help with
And those amenities are not, I want to be clear, each trailhead isn't the same. The Grapevine's like the Cadillac and then the Dyno will be a smaller one and Mill Creek will be like a middle one, kind of size-wise. So just so everyone's aware, they're not all the same type of trailhead. Grapevine's a big trailhead that has a lot of
What year of a Cadillac are you referring to?
I'm going to say the one that I don't know.
Not an old Cadillac.
Oh, wait, I shouldn't have said Cadillac. Should I say like Maserati? I don't know. I don't know cars that well.
The Cadillac version has horse access.
Yeah.
They should all have it, right?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Those trailheads will be public as well. Just want to reiterate that.
Good comment.
This is Commissioner Yer. I have a couple of questions and again, new guy, so.
Here to answer them.
Questions, yeah. I was up there a week ago kind of walking around and it seems like there's a lot of goalies and big rocks and a lot going with the storm water drainage. And I was curious how much grade is going to be needed to manage that.
Yeah, so those are great questions. So if you'll see what's currently up there, Eldon, can you zoom down a little bit? There's already an existing detention pond that's built on the very south end of the project. You can see it there kind of hatched next to the entrance to the left. So that's the first detention pond. Half of that is built already that we built as part of the entrance originally that handles that storm water. Now, the big goalies, I think you're talking to the east, there's two other detention ponds to the east that manage that. They're big holes. They're kind of behind walls.
Oh, that's what I was wondering, yeah. And is this detention pond just for this phase or is it for future phases?
No, there's detention along all of Washington Parkway. If you refer back to the master plan, they're already allocated. There's nine, I think, total. And then there's drainage conveyance that gets through the site. That brings the drainage to it and then conveys it and then discharges it later.
And if that was to be overwhelmed, do you know where the discharge goes, where the?
So they're all designed for the hundred-year storm event and then they discharge into the existing city storm drain system that's already in place.
And then I just have a couple of other questions. One is the sales center. Do you have a sense for how long the sales center is going to be there?
It'll be there until every house lot is sold.
Okay.
Up there. Like it's going to be there a long time for the life of the project. And then at some point they'll decide what they do with it and have to come and deal with it. But it was built and it was never put on a lot and we're like, we should put it on a lot and make it a real lot as far as, because it's already built. So half that road's built of Kalima Drive off of it in front of the sales center.
I noticed that. And then just one last question for me and maybe it's for attorney Segmiller. It sounds like this land is still owned by SITLA. And I was just curious, like when it's that situation, are there any kind of legal issues with that or is it just, it's okay because it's SITLA until the transfer?
Do you want me to explain it?
You can, all right, Ken.
I'll do mine and you can give the legal answer. So it's owned by SITLA, but they have a development lease with SITLA to develop the land.
Okay.
And so with that, they get the right to develop it and then when they plat these, then SITLA gets their check for their portion of the property and the developer gets their check. So it's kind of like a partnership.
And is the land ultimately conveyed, the ownership of it?
Yeah, so currently there's no patent on the land. There's no legal patent on the land because it's owned by the State of Utah, which is SITLA. And so when we create these parcels and these plats, then they make an actual patent for the land.
Okay.
And then it turns into a legal lot that then they can sell. And then these lots are actually owned by the group and then they sell them and split off the profits for it.
So administratively, the city will allow owners to make applications for their property. Only though, as many owners have consultants, either builders or developers or engineers who they pay to manage their land use process. And so the city will allow, if the owner has signed a document consenting to somebody else to act as their agent, their agent to do so. And so with SITLA properties, we categorize them in that category, which is a common category. We occasionally get owner bailed, owners doing everything themselves, but the most common one is staff verifies that there's a consent from the owner that allows applications to be applied for that owner's land or plans, et cetera. And so it's very common for the city to have someone that's representing the owner and we will administer to make sure that there's proof within the file that the owner has consented to these things.
Cool. Thank you.
We're good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I can't remember if I opened up the public hearing on this. All right, I'll open the public hearing portion of this. If there's anyone that would like to speak to it. Okay, I will close the public hearing portion of this. And if you guys have no more questions, we'll look for a motion.
Commissioner Davis, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Altamera at Solente Village Two Phase One Subdivision located approximately west Solente Parkway. Subject to conditions and findings in staff report.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, a second.
I have a first by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Mitchell. Individual voting, Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tupoe.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock, I'm an aye as well. It passes, correct? Item. Is that it?
Commissioner Tupoe, I make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Mitchell, a second.
I have a first and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.